I'm gonna go ahead and start the meeting. We have quite a bit to get through tonight. So I'll call the meeting to order. Any public comment, Jamie?
Nothing outside of my report.
Okay. Business of the board. This was quite a board packet. First of all, I just wanted to say how grateful we are to everybody who worked on this. It was quite the undertaking, so appreciate all that hard work. Approval of minutes. Did anyone have any questions or comments about the October 28th, 2020 meeting minutes? If not, may I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I will so move. It's Cindy.
Thank you, Cindy.
I'll second. It's Jenny.
Thank you, Jenny. Any discussion? Roll call, Will?
Ms. Bednarski?
Yes.
Mr. Sensoni?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Stickney?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everyone. We'll move on to the fiscal officer and finance committee report, the October financials. Will and Melissa?
We spent the November meeting in finance talking about the budget, and we did not get an opportunity to review the financials. So I'm just gonna turn it over to Will. I know I have a couple of questions, but I think it's valuable to hear Will give us kind of a highlights reel from the things that he observed in October.
Right.
Sure, yeah. I mean, per my notes, you know, we haven't seen the major impact that we thought we'd see on the PLF, so that's good news and, you know, it's hard because we're looking at October now, but we're in December, and I've processed November really mostly already too, so I'm kind of like thinking about both months, but we're gonna end the year okay with the PLF. In fact, we're probably gonna be a little bit over budget. Now, what that means is we're over our budget, but we're under what the, what the Ohio Department of Taxation and Budget Commission projected that we would receive. So there was an impact to them, obviously based on COVID, but our budget, we budgeted $700,000. We're gonna maybe come in a little bit over that, actually. I should know in the next day or so. Other than that, I mean, there's, there's nothing really that stands out. I mean, it was, it was, October was a sort of typical month. I'll kind of open it up to questions. I mean, we're still looking at low interest rates, and we're gonna look at that for the foreseeable future. I did, I did get straightened out what I'm allowed to do, so that a municipal investment does not change our audit. We won't have to be audited if we were to invest in uni-bonds. So we're gonna make that discussion happen now with Fifth Third to see what the benefits are of doing that. I'd actually like to see a comparison of if we were to remain in a CD versus going to a muni-bond. What's the difference? Is there any administrative headaches that we'd have to deal with? And then is there really a larger amount of interest earnings that we could see here? I don't know that that's the case. We'll get that clarification from him.
All right. Thanks. Well, I, I was really pleased to see that note about the muni-bond discussion starting, and, and that you had already looked into how that would affect our audit. I thought that was a great question. My, my question, I, I was, one thing that surprised me was the, it surprised me that we had a bigger operating surplus. Well, this is maybe more of a budget question, but we have a bigger operating surplus in 2019 than in 2020, and I was, I thought, wow, that surprises me. And I just was wondering if you had any theories as to why, why that was.
I think really, if you look at it, you know, in, in both instances, if you look at year-to-date actual and then actual, you know, revenue is down from that year. Expenses are down as well, which is not as much. I think that explains the difference. I mean, we still have a, a pretty significant surplus. We're gonna spend that down as the year goes on because we're not gonna see, you know, we're not gonna see any, any large revenue numbers in November and December because those, all of our real estate taxes and homestead have been realized, and our expenditures stay about the same. In fact, maybe a little bit more because we're spending on library materials towards the end of the year. So we're gonna eat into that surplus, but that, that really explains the difference. It's revenue being, being down versus last year, expenses being down as well, but just not by, not by as much.
Okay.
And most of that's the interest, honestly.
It's the interest, so it's that revenue. Yeah. Okay. Since, since I, I didn't have a chance to ask any check register questions, I was very curious to know what Brainfuse Inc. was. That was a check for 2,500 on the second page. It just sounded intriguing. I wanted to know what it was.
Trent?
If, if you recall.
I do. We need to do more advertising on that. So that is a tutor.com equivalent. So it is meant for school-aged children to get tutoring services live through, they do scheduled like one-on-one tutoring sessions. Because we can't allow tutoring in the library, we were trying to find replacement.
That's wonderful. Okay. I'm glad I asked that question. That's phenomenal.
Even better, in my opinion.
Where, where is that managed? Where is that, where is that managed from?
It's
Just curious.
Is it a link on your website that we can?
It would be on the website under resources, but I'll talk to Chanel and Dory about advertising that in a little bit more.
Is this a local resource, regional, statewide, national? What?
It's national. A lot of libraries, either Brainfuse or tutor.com have been added a lot lately, either, I think Columbus has went with Brainfuse, CPL or CCPL maybe went with tutor.com, so this one was a little cheaper. We really liked what they were offering. But it's a national.
It's live right now, though, Trent?
Uh, yes.
Do we have any figures on usage yet?
Peter? No.
Have we talked to the school about this, the school system about this?
I'd have to check with Dory and Charlotte.
Okay.
For the business of advertising it.
Sorry. Yeah, I was trying to unmute there. I have not seen any come through yet, but to be honest, I'm glad we're having this conversation now too, because I don't know how we're getting those, so I will look into that and, and try to get those on the next reports.
Okay. Great.
That's exciting. Obviously, the parents here are eager to know more about this. That sounds great. My other check question.
You'd think especially now that would be of value.
Yeah.
With remote learning and everything. Yep.
Right. Right.
My other check register question was CDW Government. I was wondering if that, what that was. That was a check for $4,659 roughly. Does that one ring a bell?
Peter?
Um. I don't recall off the top of my head what it was for. CDW supplies our tech hardware. It could have been the, the graphics publication computer. It sounds like that's around that figure.
Great. I just wasn't familiar with that vendor name. Thank you very much.
Sure. Yeah, we do, we do, we regularly get our computers and such from CDW.
I just missed that.
It's, yeah, and it's the government, obviously, the government aspect of, you know, they're doing business with governmental entities.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions for Will or Peter or Jamie? Trent?
Just on the October financials right now?
On the October financials.
Okay. If not, may I have a motion to approve the October financials?
I so move. Melissa?
Thank you, Melissa. May I have a second?
This is Jill.
Thank you, Jill. Any discussion regarding the October financials? If not, Will, will you call the roll?
Ms. Bednarski?
Yes.
Mr. Sensoni?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Stickney?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Okay, so now we will move on to the bigger part of the financials. Will, do you want to take it up here from here?
We'll have gift report, Audra.
Do you want to do the gift report first?
Yeah, is that not on the, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should do the gift report and then we can move into budget.
Okay. Um. So looks like page 16 of the packet, the gift report for the month of October. May I have a motion to approve the gift report?
Hey, so moved.
Thanks, Dave. A second?
I'll second. It's Jenny.
Thank you, Jenny. Any discussion? Not much to discuss sadly. Roll call, please, Will?
Ms. Bed-
Yes.
Mr. Sensoni?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Stickney?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, the next page, actually, Jamie, are those purchase orders exceeding $5,000? Anything to discuss with those?
No, and those don't need board approval. That's, that's informational for the board, which we've approved those POs in previous months.
Right. I, I do want to note, Will, I think this is just a manual thing. Refrigeration needs to be corrected, the spelling of it.
I was gonna say that. Jump to D.
Right.
Got it.
Anyone have any questions about these two POs? Okay, thank you. Okay, so now we can get to the 2021 budget summary.
You wanna start, Will?
Yeah, well, are we gonna do, is this in order, is, are we going over the budget? Are we gonna go over the resolutions first?
I think, I think we can have a general budget discussion, entertain any questions, and then we can just move, we should be able to just move right through the resolutions.
Okay.
And, and kind of give, before we do the resolutions, you can, you know, explain what the resolution is for.
Yeah, sure. So from, from a budget standpoint, we did have a budget meeting. I think it went over well ultimately. I think we're, we're looking at dipping in a little bit to surplus, I guess you would call it, at least on a budget standpoint. We've built surpluses over the past couple of years, though, so this isn't, this isn't a long-term strategy. It's, it's a one-year drop-in-the-bucket strategy that it, that I want to point out a couple of things to the board. One, we would do this only because we, we're, we're able to do it. There's no requirement that says we have to have some sort of balanced budget where we can't dip into surplus or anything like that. Number two, we're in great financial position, and we're looking at a year that's very odd. Not only in the current year that we're in, but really the effects of what's happening with the pandemic, and taking a conservative look at that in the future, 2021 being that first year that we are all hoping that we get through the pandemic and we start to see recovery. We're being conservative with our numbers that we're saying our revenue is going to be. Number three, again, this isn't a long-term strategy. If, if we were to see this trend where we continue to have to dip into surplus, we would make decisions to cut expenses in, even more so than we already do. We're lean operation as it is. There's room where we, we're not, this isn't a inflated budget in any way. It's just allowing our managers to have the freedom that they've had in the past and still be able to fulfill those needs. We would be more stringent on that if the trend continued. I don't anticipate that it would, but I guess you never know. So those are my, my main points about the fact that the general fund is dipping in a little bit to some prior year surpluses is okay. So if, if that question was posed, you know, we, I can elaborate more if someone had concerns about that, but I wanted to, to point that out to start. Any, any questions about that?
Jamie, did you have anything to add to that part of the discussion?
So the, the only thing that I would add to that is, as we get into page, starting at page 28, where we kind of list by the, the, the accounts, the, the, the main account, you can see on the right, other than the first 1,000, which is salaries and benefits, most of those percentages are negative, which means that we've pretty much trimmed every line item down. And the, the couple at the end on page 29, where we get into capital outlay and other objects, you know, although the percentages are high, the, the, the dollars sign, it's only about $7,000 total that is an increase. So overall, we have really gone line by line and looked at what our actual expenditures are. And then as the board discussed as well, there were some one-off things that came up or will come up this year that we moved into those special revenue funds or the, the bequest funds that we had, so 701, 702, and 703, to kind of also whittle those down a little bit more over the course of the next two to three years. So those are also helping with this, as Will says, the anomaly in, in, in the year. Add to that, we had $600,000 surplus last year, and I believe the year before we had $300,000. So there was almost a million that we made up right then. And finally, I would say that we're sitting on, right now, with most of October in, we're, we're in about a $500,000 unencumbered balance in the general fund. We've still got POs to close, et cetera. Where normally in past years, we would be around the $300,000 mark, so there's an extra, you know, just going to show the board what we've done this year that is different than, than previous years as far as spending.
Right. Right. So important, too, I think, to not only reiterate how I think fiscally conservative we are as a board, but reassuring that it's not just a typical revenue versus expenses kind of comparison that we're doing when we have that much unencumbered to work with. It should be reassuring, I think, to the board. Will, also, I was very grateful that you looked into the transfers from funds and found that transfer many fund into the general fund can be done at any time during the year.
Correct. So moving money back into the general fund can happen at any time, and that's, that makes sense, you know, and I made sure that I, you know, was double-checking that, but it does make sense because you don't wanna have funds in other accounts that you're not able to use, and your general fund gets down to, you know, we don't have that problem, but there are libraries that do, that are-
Again, I think we're, we're skittish enough after 2020 that any reassurance, which that was, feels pretty good. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, everyone. This is your chance to discuss this. I know we went over it in good detail during the finance committee meeting, but did anyone have any concerns? They've done a really good job here of laying things out for us.
One other real quick thing I wanted to point out is the, with the PLF, we're, you know, going back to the point that I just gave earlier in our October financials, the PLF number that we're using has been given to us by the state of Ohio, roughly. We, we, we kind of, we're even more conservative than that, and we back off a little bit. My point to that is you can see even their most recent estimate, which was in July of, of 2020, and they have missed that, they have missed that by, you know, up to 14% in some months. They've missed that estimate. So the point being is that we're really conservative with that number. If things continue the way that they are, and now that we all have hope that there's, there actually is light at the end of this tunnel, and if, if things continue with the economy doing, doing okay, the PLF could be much better than, than what we're budgeting for. That's a big variable. It's huge. We, we just have no idea where that's gonna end up. Fines and fees are, are another item that, that's not a huge item in our past prior years, but it, it's, who knows? We could be open to the public in, in full steam ahead by April or, or May or Ju-, you know, and, and that number could change by a lot. Again, we're really conservative with those numbers, and we're not overshooting it. I think we'd all be happier if the number comes in higher than budget, but we, we would be concerned if it came in lower, and that's why we're conservative with those numbers. The one other thing I'll point out is that in my summary that I sent out, this had nothing to do with any of the resolutions, it has nothing to do with anything. The general fund was more of, you know, more of the, the sticking point, but in the capital fund, the ending number, my projected ending budget or ending balance in the capital fund, I think my summary says 1.6. It's actually gonna be 1.2, so that, that was just a calculation error on there, so.
That's on page 22. That's just supporting documentation that the board had asked Will for, kind of where we stand at this point, and also where we think we're gonna stand by the end of the year. Those, those are hard things to project and, and do anyways, but, so that's what he's talking about, and I think the, the biggest factor in the projections is really the 101 fund, which is 21, because that's our, our main operating account and what we're, we're generally spending those POs and requisitions out of.
Right.
So we can get an updated document if we need to, out after.
Yeah, again, that doesn't change, it's just a summary. It doesn't change any, it doesn't change anything, really. It's a summary of where we were at through October, where we project to end the year, and then what we're looking at for 2021, just to lay it out for everybody, so. And the general, general funding is more important.
I think it's really helpful to have a summary, because it is kind of like a good go-to document to look at throughout the year. So I, I would appreciate just making those tweaks on that last page and maybe posting that on the board site so that we can kind of touchstone that as needed during the year. I find it, I do go back to the budget. The summary budget is especially helpful throughout the year, and it's easier to get it that way than to scroll back through old minutes.
Very good.
That would be helpful. Thank you.
I have a question on salaries and benefits. It looks like we've got one and a half percent raise plus one and a half percent based on merit pending. But it says 6% change from 2020 to 2021. Just wondering what.
So, right. There are, there are, so in salaries and benefits, there's the salaries. We also added in, you'll see later when, assuming the board approves it, the new position for the training supervisor, as well as adding a extra half a person in building services, be, the need is there with all of the cleaning and COVID things going on, so that will actually be approved in the personnel report, and then also an additional graph, half graphics and media specialist. And then what also happens, there's contingencies in the salaries and benefits because of government payout, so those numbers are a little bit inflated. And then the Opers is, basically, we pay the 14%, so it's almost, there's kind of that double, it kind of hits us double because we, we have the additional contingencies, we have some, we have those increases, and then we also have an increase on the percentage that we're paying into Opers. So that's where that comes into place, and then we have almost that 30% increase in contingencies for health insurance.
Okay, that makes sense. The reason I was looking at that number is that I thought it might be something for the board to consider that we add an additional 1.5% raise as a kind of a COVID thank you, that people are working through, that times are different. And I think the staff deserves a little bit of extra for going through this stuff.
I was gonna mention this too, Dan, and it was said on page 26 about the other libraries that have contributed an appreciation bonus for their staff members, and has that been considered? Any thoughts?
So we, on page, that actually, so Sherry attended that meeting right before our, before the packet went out, and this was kind of used to evaluate and, and show that we, we aren't far off the mark with our 3% at the top rate. I think if you look at, other than Barberton, they're doing the 3% as well as an additional bonus. Giaga, who's doing an additional bonus, has a, has a slightly lower percentage than we do. The other factor here is that we are probably the own, I, I really need to find out if I can find this out, but we paid everyone throughout the pandemic, and I'm pretty sure that most libraries did not. They either went to shared work where staff had to then get the balance of their income through the state, or they furloughed, or they laid people off. I think the 3% is fair, but I'm, you know, I'm, I'm not going to necessarily say that if the board wanted to kick something else in that we shouldn't, although I, I, again, I think that we are, are being extremely fair to the staff and the employees with the percentage that we're doing.
Well, certainly it's fair, but I, I think we should be, I'd like to see this library be one of the leaders as far as treating their staff well. And I kind of would like to see at least the bottom end of our full-time rates up to $15 an hour. So the more increases we can give, once we hit that $15 an hour, maybe I'll quit pushing it so hard, but I, I think we need to reward our staff a little better than we're doing.
Anyone have any other thoughts on that?
I just want to add, I actually completely agree with Dan, so I'm with him on that, and I also think that if we were going to consider some sort of bonus, maybe even just for the staff who have been, had to be in the office, in the, in the library throughout this whole time, or the people who have to be public-facing, I mean, that's, that's deserved, in my opinion.
And we can afford it.
Did you have an amount in mind when you look at the other? I, I mean, I don't know if the other libraries are the only guide. I don't know how they came up with their numbers, but I think, I think it's worth considering and maybe doing a little bit more research. I know this information has come to us fairly recently. I, I'm certainly open to the idea, but I do think it warrants a little bit more research and understanding of just how they came up with their number. You know, some of the information about the furlough. I think some of that's valuable information to have so that we can make a generous decision, but also a prudent decision with taxpayer money.
Yes, that's a good idea. I, I agree, we need more research. I would also urge board members to just talk to your friends and neighbors and say, hey, do you think it would be a good idea for the library to be paying at least a minimum of $15 an hour to their full-time employees? And I wouldn't be surprised if a lot of people say, what? You don't pay that much?
Well, I was thinking more about the Christmas bonus, or not Christmas bonus, sorry. Obviously, my mind is on Christmas, the end-of-year COVID bonus idea at this point in time.
Well, I'd rather see an increase, salary increase than a bonus.
So obviously, then that too would affect salaries across the board, and we can take- And we can take a look at numbers more closely to see how it would affect the budget, you know, for, for all of the staff as well. And then Jamie, if you could also get us maybe some options for what we might consider doing for the staff, um, that would be good as a way to move forward. But I think it's good information that Sherry brought to us. And, um, as Melissa said, we do have to keep in mind what we have already committed to and how we've already supported our staff throughout this year. And while we're in a very good position, some of the uncertainties that are bound to come up in, you know, at least the, the first half of the coming year. So, um, if we could see maybe some actual figures, then we can start making some decisions, I think.
Well, one actual figure I'm looking at, which doesn't jive necessarily with Dan's thought is uh, looking at the budget, uh, for 2020 and the projected year end. We're going to come in about $65,000 under budget. Can some of that be used for, now this would be a bonus type thing, Dan, rather than a adjustment. But can some of that be used to, to give some kind of a bonus to the employees at the end of the year? Don't have to use all of it, but it seems to be a little bit there.
From, from my, from my standpoint, I mean, yes, that is allowed. Absolutely. Especially with the way we appropriate money, we're not overspending any of our appropriations, whether you spend it. Uh, because we do it on a fun basis now, you're just spending out of the general fund. Jamie could probably talk more detail to why that is, but that happens quite frequently that we come in below budget. And again, a lot of it has to do with just anticipated potential for retirement and things like that. But you're right, the money is.
Part of that's got to be like, uh, how much you're budgeting for health insurance? And maybe it comes in a little lower, things like that go there too, I'm sure.
Correct.
Well, I think Will and Jamie both emphasized, uh, at least at the budget meeting, that it's important when you think about the budget. The budget doesn't mean you will and must and shall spend the amount that we've designated. The, the budget numbers are intended to be somewhat generous so that there's a lot of freedom there, but it doesn't mean you have to spend every last penny. So I think it's an important distinction to make.
I agree with that sentiment. I was just looking for an, uh, opportunity for this one particular. You're certainly not going to want to budget on every item.
I think that, um, you know, we, we have these documents prepared and, um, as far as what the salaries um, are looking like going into next year. Um, potentially at the January meeting, when we know exactly what the year-end figures are and the year is closed, uh, which we will have at that January meeting, I think we could revisit. And I don't think it would be, um, I, I don't think it would be looked badly at if, um, something was done um, at, at that point versus this month as well. And I think we would all be more informed. Um, so that is something I think we could potentially table as far as the bonuses for, um, if you're looking at a COVID bonus, um, for next year. And again, I'm not opposed to it, but in, in directives that we've had from the board, um, it, you know, when, when revenues were down, we're also looking at, um, how to balance that with our spending. So every kind of directive that I've been giving, I think that we have done that. Um, and, you know, we certainly can, can move forward as the board sees fit. Uh, I think January might be a better time when we have the, the year-end figures.
I agree with that. That would make me feel better knowing that all of the POs have been entered, paid. Everything has been reconciled. And then, um, a couple of different options, I think, is always good to give to the board along with our maximum exposure. And then we can have a little more educated decision or discussion even.
Well, then, uh, taking off from Dan's suggestion about the $15 minimum, I'm not saying I support it or not. But one way I could know, or, uh, in my mind of how, uh, we could pursue that would be to know what impact that would have on the budget.
Right.
Right.
If that, if that can be detailed and, and not, you know, just one number, how much would this cost us to go up to $15 an hour as a minimum for full-time employees?
I, I think even more beneficial than, than to budget, um, would be to see a more of a hypothetical, which is we know what 2020 comes in at December 31st. We know the, the full year's expenditures and salaries. If you were to take all of those full-timers that made below $15 an hour and now showed the, that full year's worth of work, had they made $15 an hour, you could then see a realistic difference of what it does to the number versus budget.
The other, the, yes. And the other aspect of this, as I've said before, as far as, um, you know, beyond the bonus aspect, um, you know, uh, talking about a minimum salary, we have, there, all of our positions are rated on a position. So if, if a full-time person is working next to a part-time person and the full-time person is making $15 an hour, uh, for doing the exact same job as a part-time person, um, there's a discrepancy there. And I think that has to be looked at and evaluated as well. And, and whether you're saying that every single position should be at 15 or not, um, regardless, there, there is that discrepancy. Uh, and we, we have discussed that in the past as well. So, um, I, I think that that's a, um, uh, definitely a cautious road.
There's, there's a lot to look at. I agree. And I'm not even advocating just bringing people at the bottom up to 15. I think it might take years before we actually achieve that. I think it would be more fair if we did it in terms of percentage raises for most of the full-time staff. Because it's not fair just to bring the people at the bottom up to 15 and everybody else around them. You know, if you're making 16, it's like, hey, this guy just got 20% raise and I've got one and a half. So it, it's a lot more complicated. It's not something we can solve tonight, but it's something we should be thinking about.
Right. I, in terms of going back to the COVID bonus, um, I think it's nice that these other libraries have offered that around this time of year, but we're still in the pandemic. So I think it is fine for us to take the time we need to determine if that's something we want to do and what that amount would be. It's not going away overnight. So just wanted to say that.
Right, right.
I, I, anyone else? I'm sorry. I just still want to add that, yes, it is definitely, um, not going to be resolved tonight, but our, our staff is being asked to do something as a, like, you know, as an essential employee right now, you know? And I think that we need to keep that in mind, right? So I mean, maybe we don't give them a bonus for the holiday and maybe we don't do it until the pandemic is over. But I think we do need to keep that thought in our, in our minds. Um, because they are, they're putting themselves out there.
No, I think that's a great point. You know, what everyone's been raising, it, we absolutely need to look at it for January. I think you're right. I think the timing will be good. And it's, it's not fair to just say, hey, let's give them X amount of dollars right now. Or, um, let's increase salary, you know, increase the hourly rate. Cause I think those are two separate issues and I'm glad they're brought up. They're good points. But probably we need to make sure we've got the research, like where are we in comparison? Just what Jamie was saying, where are we in a pay scale? And plus there, there's another important person who needs to be a part of this discussion from our HR, our HR support at this point needs to be a part of that.
And, and.
Yeah.
Um, and, and the other thing is, um, you know, and yes, Sherry definitely needs to be part of that discussion. And Sherry and I regularly discuss these types of topics and make sure that we are, um, equivalent to area libraries, other libraries. Um, you know, as I mentioned, um, I, I think all of us agree that we want to hire the best staff and we want to retain the best staff. And, um, you know, it is done with, uh, their actual, um, hourly rate or their salaries. It's also done in benefits. And, um, I think, you know, part of that discussion, I, I think it's a, it's a broader discussion and we certainly can have those. Um, but one of the bigger impacts is going to be health insurance. You know, that's going to be a bigger, a, a bigger impact. So.
Bigger impact to the budget, yeah.
Well, a bigger impact to the budget, but also a bigger impact to, um, the, the staff who, um, you know, we've got, um, 35 to almost half of our staff are on the insurance in some way, shape or form. And those who have family coverage or who have any type of coverage that's beyond single coverage, um, are, are somewhat getting raked through the coals based on those percentages. And I think that's, um, you know, really where a priority should be. And again, I'm not saying that I disagree with any of this conversation. Um, but these are conversations that Sherry and I have on a regular basis, making sure that we are competitive, um, with, with those around us as well. So this isn't, um, um, something that is just necessarily coming out of the blue as well. I guess I just want to reassure the board that these are things that Sherry is looking at. And, um, you know, just like this NEO meeting that she went to, they're regularly discussing types of things where, well, how much are you paying for this position or, um, or what are you doing in this situ- situation, uh, et cetera?
Well, I guess, uh, Jill was right. There are like two issues. I think now we have three. There's the COVID bonus. There's how do we increase the rates that we're paying the staff? And then there's benefits, the insurance, uh, issue. And I was, I'm sorry if I messed things up by bringing in the, uh, rate increase. But as far as COVID bonuses go, I think this quicker we can get something, some kind of a thank you to the staff, the better, even if it's not a full amount. You know, we may want to make it more later, but a quicker thank you, they've already been through. And, you know, we've all been through most of a year of this already. I think some kind of a bonus, even if it's not everything, would be nice.
I think it's possible, but I think we maybe want to focus just on getting through to the meeting today. We have a lot on our plate today. I think introducing a new, um, human resources idea at a board meeting is, it's a great starting point, but I don't know if we can make a determination when a little bit more research is.
No, no, no determination.
So I think, I think you, you brought up some good points, Dan, and, and, and others have as well. And, you know, I think the human resources, the personnel committee, um, with Sherry can, can kind of flush those out, get some numbers and, and move forward in the next month.
Yep. Sorry to waste too much time, but this is the only place I can bring it up.
Well, you, you're always welcome to come to the budget meeting. So, but yes.
Yeah. And, and we can certainly, and, and as far as the, you know, again, if the, if, if the bonus is something the board wants to do, again, I think January is the appropriate time and, and one month, um, is to make a break, um, and, and still potentially has goodwill. Um, if, if that's something that is decided and we know exactly what the numbers look like.
We'll review some options in January.
Yeah.
Okay. Very good.
I have one other thing with the budget to say, I wanted to thank you so much for, I wanted to thank you, Will, for adding the year-to-date. I, I feel like for me, it makes a big difference in understanding where we're going. I know it's not perfect and I know there's a lot to happen, but I really, really appreciate those year, year-to-date numbers. So thank you.
True.
It does save you from trying to have to flip back through different, if you have a specific thing in mind. Okay. Um.
Are we ready for resolutions? Are there any other general questions?
Yeah, I believe we're ready to move ahead with the resolutions. All right. So what page are we on? Oh, 38, looks like resolution 07-20. This is very typical. This is what we do every year, everyone. Will, do you have anything to add about this particular resolution?
No, um, it's kind of just a, yeah, it's, it's something you do every year. It gives, it, it is saying that Rocky River is requesting our money, um, and that, that the county is going to give us that money. So.
Right.
That's the very, that's the very fun way to say it.
Right. We want our money. All right. If there's no questions or comments, may I have a motion to approve resolution 07-20, requesting advance of funds from the county?
So moved, Melissa.
Thank you, Melissa. A second?
This is Jill's second.
Jill, thank you. Any discussion? Roll call please, Will.
Ms. Bednarzki?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer? Ms. James?
Yes.
Ms. Stickney?
Yes.
Mr. Sansoni?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Page 39 of the packet, resolution 08-20, the permanent appropriations for 2021. Any questions or comments about this particular resolution? This is the big one.
The only thing I'll remind the board is that this is telling, uh, this is, this, first off, this can be amended as we had to do this year one time, uh, because of the CARES Act money. But this is, going back to that point that was brought up earlier, we have a budget in place. This is saying that we're allowing ourselves to spend up to that budget. It does not mean we will spend all of this money. It just means we are allowing ourselves to spend up to this point. And then the, if you look at the general fund, that does not mean we're spending $5,379,000. A big chunk of that is actually moving money into another fund. So keep that in mind too.
Any questions about any of that? All right, everyone. May I have a motion to approve resolution 08-20, permanent appropriations for 2021? Thank you, Cindy. May I have a second?
Second from Dave.
Thank you, Dave. Any discussion? Roll call please, Will.
Ms. Bednarzki?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sansoni?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Ms. Stickney?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Will. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to page 41, resolution 09-20, the transfer of funds from the general fund to the capital fund. Any questions about this resolution? With everything that we've discussed in detail. Will, do you have anything to add?
No, this one's pretty straightforward.
If there are no questions or comments, may I have a motion to approve?
This is Jill, motion to approve.
Thank you, Jill. A second?
Melissa, I second.
Thank you, Melissa. Any discussion? Will?
Ms. Bednarzki?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Ms. Stickney?
Yes.
Mr. Sansoni?
Yes.
Are you?
All right. Thank you, everyone. Now we'll move on to the employee rates. That's page 42 of the packet. End question about the employee rates for the coming year. The December 4th, um, date at the top was just the date of prep, I assume?
Yes, that's the date of prep. The actual, when this is, um, so the motion for this would approve these as of December 27th, as, um, talked about on the, that is listed on the agenda. That is the start of the pay period so that the first full pay, uh, of the new year, um, we, cause we do have a payday on January 1st, but that is all, uh, 2020 rate, um, pay. Um, so the, the two weeks after that, it would make sure that they're getting, um, that increase, um, for the year.
Okay.
And this is, this is typical of what we've done the past few years.
Right. Any other questions regarding this?
Uh, it'd be handy to have a column that identifies full-time or part-time.
Good point. May we request that for next year?
Um, I think that we can, um, we can certainly prepare a board document. I, I don't know that it, um, needs to be done on the actual, um, document that is approved, but we can certainly give that information to the board. but we can certainly give that information to the board because I was trying to go through it myself. I understand your point, Dan, um and we can have those discussions.
I just want to add another voice saying, we've already talked about it tonight, but I just want to say it again, that I would love to see all of these up to fifteen dollars an hour at some point relatively soon.
And we'll get all of those figures to compare and take a look at all of the ramifications. Any other questions or comments? If not, may I have a motion to approve the employee rates effective December twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty?
Uh this is Dave, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Dave, may I have a second?
This is Jill, I second.
Thank you, Jill, any discussion? If not, Will, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bednarski? Mr. Sansoni?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Stickney?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Very good, everyone, thank you so much for that. Will, did you have anything else under your report?
I do not.
Okay. Very good, we'll move on to the director's report, Jamie.
Um yeah, and I know that we have a lot to go through. Um so the only thing, uh if there's um no questions about my report, the one thing that was not that did not get included in the report, um which hopefully you saw because you're on our email list, we were um rated as a four-star library by the Library Journal. And um we are one of thirty-one libraries in Ohio that have a anywhere from three to five stars. Uh there was also a Cleveland dot com article um about that. Lakewood and Westlake um were also rated four stars and they are in the same budget category that we are. And um just as a a as a point, um we were uh although we all got four stars, we were rated a little higher than Westlake. So I I'm just saying.
Okay, just saying. Jamie, what do Jamie, what do we have to do to get five stars?
Um we have to be um uh basically what they're looking at is the outcomes. Um so they're looking at our per capita and then they look at circulation per capita, uh e-rate e-media circulation per capita, which I think that is something that we could increase. Um computer use per capita, that is something that we probably will not be able to increase too much. Despite one, uh because we have a limited space with um computers, although we have opened up some computers around the library to, I think, assist with that. And then uh program attendance per capita are kind of the the um the the most um mentionables, I think that we can really concentrate on. Um and um you know, I I think the bottom line with this is it it's nice to have the stars. It's nice to be recognized. Um but at the same time, it it you know, if we did not have any stars, I don't think it's going to necessarily affect the opinion of our community uh too much, but it's definitely nice to have that recognition. It's kind of like that um you know, the blue ribbon, I think, for the schools.
Mm-hmm, right, right. Well, congratulations, we're proud of everyone.
Yeah. So Melissa, you'll have big shoes to fill next year as president as Audra's going out with four-star.
You know, I hadn't thought about that, but since you put it that way, you're you're right.
No matter the stars, big shoes to fill. I Jamie, I did um I just wanted to commend you. I saw that you wrote many a thank you letter for donations this past month and I think that's great. And I was pleased to see so many um gifts that were recognized that way.
Uh yes, and and we received quite a few um uh very generous uh high donations, so we're doing well.
Right, right, yeah, that was wonderful and so so thoughtful. Did anyone have any questions about Jamie's report?
All right, um I will move into um approval of the deputy fiscal officer position that uh the only change that we're doing with this is making her exempt. And uh kind of as I explained in my report, this is something that we've been thinking of. We had been thinking of for a couple of years with Pam Ward, who was in the position. Uh she had been in that position um various positions in the finance office for quite a while and she um was nearing retirement. And so we felt like this was a good time with Rhonda being uh within her first year. Rhonda um is doing an amazing job in what she's doing and really um kind of kind of proven to us that there are things that only Rhonda can answer um uh without necessarily having to go to will and um definitely secured our mindset that we should make that the position exempt.
Anyone have any questions about this? I think this is pretty straightforward, pretty standard, what we would expect from a position like this. All right, if there are no questions or comments, may I have a motion to approve the new deputy fiscal officer job description to make this position exempt?
I so moved, it's Jenny.
Thank you, Jenny. May I have a second? I'll second, actually. Any discussion? Will, will you call the roll, please?
I didn't catch that second, who was that?
That was me.
I'm sorry, okay. Uh roll call, Ms. Bednarski?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Ms. Stickney?
Yes.
Mr. Sansoni?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good, okay, let's move on to the next, the new new position.
Uh yeah, so again, I I wrote a little bit about this. This is a um training services supervisor position. Um if you recall, uh Peter uh actually used to um manage the technology department as well as the computer center. And when we moved um when we combined technology and technical services, we combined the computer center with training, um which is Angela Patrick, who is the training services manager. And um it's kind of shown throughout the year that this is something where we can put a uh a mid-level uh supervisor position in. They'll be able to handle most of the computer center staff, the issues, um ordering supplies, making sure that there's adequate coverage, doing the schedules. And then the other thing that we've found that we need, especially now with COVID, as well as all of the technological changes, and I'm sure the board would appreciate this with all of the stuff that you've gone through with uh teams and Outlook and and Office three-sixty-five, is that we would like to also have the concentration of a specific staff trainer. Um so there's uh a lot of technology still to come and I think that there's some technology proficiencies that we also want to make sure that all staff have uh as we move. So this position would be uh one where uh it would allow us to do additional one-on-ones with the public, but then would have that additional focus to make sure that the staff is is up to par with their technology training needs.
One little typo, there's a an apostrophe after years um first sentence in qualifications. That is not needed.
Yeah, we've discussed this before and it's something we've gone back and forth with and that's Sherry's preferred way to do it. And she has had um she's shown me in the past why it is there. So um it we can take it out if you feel strongly, but I believe uh when we went through the other job descriptions that that is um something that it's um possessive.
Not possessive.
We can take it out.
It seems goofy. Possessive. Um my other question was for the um since we have this new position and the training services manager would be doing the scheduling for the departmental staff, would that mean or I'm sorry, the training services supervisor, would that mean that we'd have to change the training services manager's description to take out the scheduling component?
They would, no, I don't think so because if uh i- in case something happened to the supervisor, that duty would fall on them and they also would have the oversight of it. So um I I will still bring that up to Sherry, but I I think that that position can I think that can stay in that manager's um job description to do that, if if it um I would assume it's already in there.
Uh okay, uh Jamie, you mentioned that one of the uh parts of the uh one of the responsibilities of the job will be to work with staff on internal training. Is that in here anywhere? I just breezed through it and didn't see it, but of course.
It's under the first, it's under paragraph five.
Where are we?
Training library, training library staff, it's.
The position summary.
Okay.
So it's the third in the list of.
Our staff. Uh should it then also be reflected under essential duties and responsibilities? I mean, that's just a reference there.
I I seem to recall when we revised all of these that we that the essential duties and responsibilities was kind of uniform for a lot of the positions and the the very specific.
I, it's under I in essential duties.
Oh, yes.
Conduct staff training programs, one-on-one patron instruction. Okay, that kind of combines two different things. Unless I'm reading it wrong, that's.
No, I think I agree with you, Dave, yeah. Is there a way to make that a little more clear, Jamie?
Um, yeah.
Some something like.
Separate them.
Yeah, and you know, a- and and it's going to be a it's is that function assisting the training supervisors ma- services manager? Or is that a responsibility unto the uh supervisor itself?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Okay, is that responsibility uh something that she would be doing or he would be doing under the uh uh guidance of the training services manager? Or is that a responsibility? Okay, so I guess then we'd have to look at the training services manager's job description and see if it's in there also. If this is a function of the of the service man of the two of them, it it really should be listed.
I can look, i- it's already something that is Angela does, I can look that up.
Okay. Just just from my experience writing a million of these.
So is this position? I'm sorry, uh is this position like a deputy to the training services manager? Or is this a s- like a separate branch of people? And how many people do they supervise?
Uh there are um four other, there is four staff that um are in the computer center. And um it would serve as um it's under the train, it's not, it's the same department. So they would answer to the training services manager.
And how many people total answer to the training services manager?
This would be this the second position that answers directly to the training services manager. And then um ancillary, the computer center staff, if the supervisor, I mean ultimately, would um would report to the manager as well, similar to um any staff could report to me as director as that um you know, like if Trent is unavailable type of thing.
And do you happen to know often what our manager to employ to regular staff ratio is?
I don't, I can find that out.
I'm just curious, is there like a an organization chart that shows?
There is an organization chart on the um on the board site and this position um is not on there because it's not approved at this point. But there is an org chart on the bill um uh board site and it would be updated if this is approved.
So getting back to item I, would it be cleaner to separate those into two or shift including one-on-one patron instruction to another item?
Um that that can, that can be a different item.
Okay. Uh anybody have any other questions or comments about this? If they separate that out into two items, would anyone have any hesitations about approving this tonight? As amended, as corrected, as edited, however you want to say it?
I I wouldn't have a problem with that, I would speak, put that in the mo- in the motion.
Just as edited, you mean?
Yeah, just just as an uh, yeah.
Anyone else have any questions or comments about that? If not, may I have a motion to approve the training supervisor job description as edited?
So moved, this is Melissa.
Thank you, Melissa, a second?
I'll second it, Dave.
Thank you, Dave. Any discussion? Roll call, please?
Ms. Bednarski?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer? Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. James?
Yes.
Ms. Stickney?
Yes.
Mr. Sansoni?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you, everyone. All right, page fifty-seven, the December Personnel Report. Jamie, you want to discuss this?
Um yeah, so this is um uh it's pretty self-explanatory. Uh we did hire uh two new building services assistants, one at forty hours a week and one at twenty hours a week. Um Jeremy uh actually came to us from the city. He uh manages uh or he did manage the um the ice rink, um that was part of his duties. He also has um quite a bit of certifications that he's coming into the job with. Um so this is definitely something that um um we were looking forward to. And um Peter, actually Peter Nicolosi, he actually worked for us in the past and he works part-time at Giant Eagle and you might have seen him, you might see him there. And then he um was kind of excited to uh come back to the library and so he's doing um twenty hours a week.
Okay, and how um does this fill out robustly our building services staff then?
This would put them back at, a- a- as Greg would say, he's back at full um full staff. Uh if you um I don't know, actually probably um uh half of you might recall uh when we did have a previous twenty-hour-a-week person. Um and that was probably three to four years ago. Uh Dave had retired and it was something where we um were trying to um determine the need. We spread out some duties amongst the other staff, um changed their hours a little bit. And um it's now, especially with COVID and all the cleaning that needs to be done, uh it just got to the point where um the need arose again. And so with this hire, we we did have two candidates we liked and one actually was looking for part-time. So um we did do the part-time position. So I think that um it will allow uh Greg to concentrate a little bit more fully on that building assessment plan, which we all um talk about so much, and um allow some of the other duties to um to happen without as much of his control as well as um not require him to do as much of the actual buildings assist services assistant work and and um manage. and, and manage the department and do the things that only he can do.
Right, right, and we do have a succession training starting, correct?
It is in his performance and goals for the year, and it'll be something that he'll be working on with Sheri in twenty-twenty-one specifically. As we, you know, get back to having everyone here full-time, as well as Greg being here. And, and able to do all of his job duties.
Well, we're so grateful to the building services staff, this has been, you know, just one challenge after another, so extend our gratitude to them, please.
I will do that.
All right, do we have any discussion about the personnel report?
Yeah, I'm just curious, what's our total number of full-time employees, total number of part-time employees now, and any vacancies?
So again, I don't have that number right offhand, Dan. I believe that is a document on the board site, if it's not, I can get that. I know I did have it at some point because the question does come up. And as far as vacancies, there is possibly one computer center vacancy. If you recall last month, Arbord left the library in the computer center. So with the addition of the full-time training supervisor, we'll be evaluating the, the rehire of that position or not. I suspect we will fill some of those hours in a part-time way, I believe he was at eighteen. Peter, you, do you recall the hours that Arbor was, was that eighteen probably?
I think he was at twelve, at least when I was running.
Okay, right, so we will be evaluating that after we hire the training supervisor, and I'll get those numbers for you, Dan.
Okay, thanks, might be something to even stick on the bottom of the personnel report, just as.
Yeah, I'm sure Sheri, you know, like I said, Sheri would probably know it off the top of her head.
Any other questions or comments? If not, may I have a motion to approve the December personnel report?
This is Jill, motion to approve.
Thank you, Jill.
I'll second, it's Jenny.
Thank you, Jenny. Any discussion? Will?
Ms. Bednarski?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Ms. Stickney?
Yes.
Mr. Sontoni?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Before we move on to the president's report, were there any questions about any of the departmental reports in the packet, any comments? I, I did have a question about the support services, and Peter, you're here, so I have a question for you. I know that we're working to get the, what is this new program, the free print, or the printing program in place where you can paper cut? So my question is, once that works and that's in place, and you can print from somewhere else, it said here, you can print from a free print balance of up to ten dollars a week. Was that typo, was it a fee print? I mean, I guess what I'm asking is, can each patron print for free up to ten dollars a week? Am I reading that correctly?
Yeah, so when we reopen the computer center, what we had done previously was one dollar per day. But with the limited number of computers available, and they were only by appointment, people were expected to infrequently be able to take advantage of that dollar a day printing. Sometimes we would also run into a situation where, you know, somebody doesn't come in very frequently at all, but they have, you know, a twenty or thirty-page report, let's say, that they needed to print one time. So in trying to figure out how to manage that free print balance, we kind of landed on doing a weekly allotment. And that way people could take advantage of it in full in one go, or if they were able to get in more frequently, you know, they could kind of chip away at it. And so in terms of, of paper cut, we just adopted the same, the same free print balance so that it was similar regardless of which print service you were using.
Okay, so I, that sort of, I thought I had seen at some point that there was a cost for printing attached to per page, and there must be, if you exceed that amount, is that right?
So black and white pages are ten cents a page, and color prints are twenty-five cents a page.
Okay, but you have, right now you have ten dollars per pa, patron free. Peter, did you have something else to add?
Sorry, no, yeah, that's correct, so each, each patron account, it resets every week, it's, it's a ten-dollar free print balance per week.
The idea, the idea with this, previously we had done a dollar per day free printing, and I think in the time of COVID, and in order to reduce barriers, we really felt that, again, you know, the, the use of this type of feature, and really, the, the true cost of printing is so cheap at this point, that it was easier to do this lump sum versus doing it per day, having to have staff interaction, and with this remote printing, if somebody's, if, as Peter said, if somebody has a college report due, or even if they had a business report due with everyone working from home, all the various scenarios right now with COVID, that this really could save the day potentially for somebody. And to be able to, to just completely be able to, to have that solution, one-stop solution was where we were, we ended up.
Conversely, then you also have to set a limit, so there's no abuse of it as well. Right, I think ten dollars per patron per week is pretty high, actually. I mean, I, I don't imagine, given that you have the restrictions of how many patrons can come in at a time, it, it can't, it's limited in how much it can be used. And I'm assuming when we go back to pre-post COVID, that, that, that number will change.
Well, yeah, to, to reevaluate, I think, you know, Jamie mentioned the cost of printing being low, we used to spend, you know, hundreds of dollars per toner cartridge, you know, but years and years ago, because they were just very expensive. And since we've adopted the, with ComDoc, you know, we do an annual, we pay them annually, a couple thousand dollars, and then that's all the print toner cartridges are included. So, you know, we're really, it's, it's tenths of a cent per page to print. But definitely something to reevaluate, once, once we're back in full force, you know, we had regulars in every day that would use, use their little print allotment. I can remember patrons who would print like a, a manual for their camera, it was eighty pages. They'd come in every single day, eight days straight, just to print it off. So I think something like this, where they have that opportunity to, to just print it all off in one go, staff doesn't have to handle money as much right now. They don't have to make all those trips, some of the barriers that we were trying to, to solve.
I, I just love the creativity and how we're, we're finding more ways to help the community, because that's what we're supposed to be doing. You know, that, that's our mission, how do we engage them, how do we help them stay connected, so that's great. I think just all of these services that have, you've developed this year is tremendous.
Right.
Yeah, and in this, in this particular instance, if the cost has truly gone down substantially, why not raise the benefit to the, to the, to the people, to the patrons? It used to be seven dollars a week, now it's ten. Cost has gone down, it's not costing us anymore.
Right. And of course, there will be evaluation all along the way. Very good, any other questions or comments about any of the departmental reports?
I'm sorry, I wanted to bring up one thing that came to me from the community. That a, a friend of mine came to the, to the window and to ask for their checkout materials, and they were told, they were denied their materials because they had their, the wife, it was, I'm sorry, it was the husband who came, and it was the wife's library card. And they said, we can't give you this because it's not your card, and he said, it's my wife's card, and they said, well, have your wife come back. And so I just wanted to talk about that and what the process is for that, because I think that that, I, I'm just wondering what that, what, what we should do about that, or what we should say about that.
That's a patron privacy issue, and not something necessarily that we encountered too much, I think that we've had these issues in the past. The wife simply would need to call in and say that she allows her husband to check out materials on her card. This type of thing, the wife could be getting, researching any type of materials that, and the husband not knowing that, you know, us not knowing truly that he has permission to check the stuff out that is on hold for her. That it's, you know, that's a, it's a patron privacy thing. So I, I understand in that instance, that's frustrating.
No, I, I totally agree with everything you're saying. My question is, could it be that we ask for a second set of identification instead of asking that in light of the programs that we have coming up, et cetera, et cetera? If someone's ID does not match the presented gender that somebody sees at the window, maybe they could just ask for a second set of ID? And if the ID does not match the library card, then we don't give them the materials, but instead of just denying it, does that make sense?
Yeah, but it does, but in the same in, instance, though, his ID wouldn't have matched, it wouldn't have matched either way, right, in this circumstance, because it wasn't his card.
Okay, maybe not. Yes.
Ideally, the CIRC staff could have suggested that, offered that solution of having the wife call in. And the wife could have called in that same day without coming in, and given that individual, it doesn't have to be family, they can give an individual permission to use their comp, in this staff and make note on, on that comp. The staff should have offered that as a solution at that time. ID works, but it has to, has to match unfortunately for that privacy.
So since we're doing so much, we're trying to steer people toward the window, is that something that we should have prominently maybe on the website, or you know, when you're putting something on hold, should there be a little, is there, I don't, I don't, I, I, I use the whole, but I wouldn't have been looking for something like that? Is it anywhere? I don't know if it's anywhere, but I know we did this, we were quarantined at one point for COVID. And we had our neighbor across the street, Jean, who was a board member here, we had her and her husband pick up books for Beatrix. And we had simply called, no one had told us to do this, we just thought this seems like it would work. We called CIRC, and we said, this person's going to be picking up so-and-so's books. And we give permission, and do you need anything else? And they said, no, that's fine, we, we recognize that, and they went and got the books for us. So I, I guess just to counter what your friend experienced, we've had a good experience doing that exact same thing that you suggested Trent and Jamie, which is just the call-in, in fact, it wasn't even family, it was a neighbor picking up books for us. So that did work for us. But you're right, it's not known that it's something you can do, it might be nice to add that to the, to the newsletter, or just on the, you know, COVID page, or even just a little did you know on Instagram kind of thing. All right, very good, thank you for that, Jenny. Any other departmental questions, comments? Peter, thank you very much for the hotspot data, that was very interesting.
Just a quick one for Trent, Trent has been a pushback from reducing the amount of time in the computer lab from two to one hour.
No, I asked that a few, a few times, actually. It's, if any, extremely minimal, mostly positive. You know, our regular users are pretty understanding, because it's not one hour, two hour that they might be most interested in, it might be real extended times. So they're understanding, they understand what we're trying to do. And then a lot of people that actually want to use the lab will find it, have found it very useful, because they're, they're not looking for a extended period, they're looking for a, a brief period to accomplish a task, and most of the time that's done within an hour. So I asked that a few times, I was a little worried, good response so far.
I had been, I had been inquiring about this since we went, since we reopened the computer center, wondering and discussing with Angela whether, you know, we're actually servicing more patrons by doing the one hour. And as she looked through the data, most of the patrons in the computer center were not using the full two hours. So, you know, certainly a valid question and something that we looked into before doing that, but yeah, I, I haven't heard anything else either.
I think it's a good policy, I just wondered if we, if there was anything, anything happened, okay, I'm, I'm all in favor.
Anything else? Thank you for that, everyone. All right, president's report, you all received on page fifty-eight, the proposed slate of officers for twenty-twenty-one. We are nominating Melissa as president, Jill as vice, and Dave has agreed to stay on as secretary. This is the proposal of the slate this month. At our organizational general meeting in January is when we'll actually vote on it. So anticipate me starting the meeting in January, and this will be one of the first items on the agenda. And then we will switch over, assuming there's no controversy to the new officers for twenty-twenty-one. Any questions about this? All right, thank you very much. Committee reports, personnel, we will get to, buildings and grounds, Dan?
No meetings.
Thank you. Anyone have anything else before we move to go into executive session? And as Jamie said, Peter, Trent, and then of course Will and Jamie, everyone just go out of the meeting and we'll see you next month, okay, and have a good holiday.
Is that resolution ten twenty, is that for information?
That'll be, that'll be for board business after the executive session.
After executive session, we'll come back into regular session. May I have a motion to enter into executive session, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Dave, a second?
I'll second, it's Jenny.
Thank you, Jenny. Will, will you call the roll, please?
And this is to discuss personnel matters?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Ms. Bednarski?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Ms. Stickney?
Yes.
Mr. Sontoni?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much, everyone. All right. May I have a motion to leave executive session, please?
So moved, Melissa?
Thank you, Melissa, may I have a second?
Second from Dave.
Thank you, Dave, I do not believe we need to call the roll for that. Correct, everyone?
Right.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to new business. May I have a motion to approve resolution ten dash twenty, appointing the fiscal officer and deputy fiscal officer as amended? Please take note of this, we're amending the third paragraph to state now that the fiscal officer be compensated as set forth in the agreement between the library and the fiscal officer. The old wording is a little outdated for us. And Will, I can send you this exact wording.
Okay. Okay.
May I have a motion to that effect?
So moved, this is Jenny.
Thank you, Jenny, second?
This is Jill, second.
Thank you, any discussion? All right, and call the roll, please?
Ms. Bednarski?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Ms. Stickney?
Yes.
Mr. Sansonin?
Yes.
Very good, thank you, everyone, for that. Any other new business tonight? If not, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved, Dave.
Thank you, Dave, and a second.
Second, this is Jenny.
Thank you, Jenny, thank you, everyone, good meeting tonight, thank you for all the discussion.
Thank you.
Thanks all.